Hello, welcome. Welcome everyone. Bonjour, re-bonjour. Vous êtes dans la session Table ronde sur l'origine du SIDA. Et avant de passer la parole à notre panel, nous aimerions vous rappeler ou proposer une motion pour avoir un injection d'IV supervisée partout au Canada. Comme la science doit conduire la politique et pas le contraire. Je pense que nous avons assez et nous représentons tous les centres du Canada. Nous allons préparer un texte pour peut-être ce soir après la réunion ou demain pour votre signature. Que les scientifiques, les groupes de communauté de toutes les provinces du Canada veulent avoir une motion que la science conduit la politique et que les résultats de la médecine évidente indiquent que l'injection d'IV supervisée devrait être une bonne façon d'améliorer la santé des patients et la vie au Canada pour réduire aussi la violence. Donc, s'il vous plaît, après cette session, nous vous invitons à signer un document si nous pouvons préparer et avoir un document français et anglais valide. Sans transition, je vais donc passer la parole au Dr. Regent Thomas, président et fondateur de la clinique médicale actuelle, pour nous parler de ce qui s'est passé dans la ville de Leopoldville au début du siècle passé. Dr. Regent Thomas.
Ce n'est pas moi qui va en parler. Merci Jean-Pierre. Alors, je pense qu'on a un sujet très intéressant cet après-midi. On est très, très privilégié d'avoir deux grands invités à mes côtés. J'ai d'abord présenté Dr. Winberg puis après je présenterai Dr. Peppin. Alors, c'est une table ronde. Dr. Peppin va parler de « The Perfect Storm » et va nous raconter à propos de ce fascinant livre qu'il a écrit récemment. Et Dr. Winberg... Tout le monde connaît Dr. Winberg ici. Je pense qu'il aura peut-être des opinions à propos de l'histoire de l'HIV et nous aimerions entendre ça. Dr. Winberg est professeur de microbiologie et directeur du McGill Health Centre. Il était le président de l'Organisation Internationale de Médecine depuis 1998-2000 et a aidé à organiser la conférence internationale sur l'AIDS à Durban, Afrique du Sud en 2000. Il est très connu pour sa identification individuelle de l'ATV comme un médicament antiviral et pour sa contribution multiple dans le domaine de la résistance à l'ATV et de la pathologie de l'ATV. Dr. Winberg a reçu beaucoup, beaucoup, beaucoup de prix. Je ne les nommerai pas parce que nous serons ici jusqu'à demain. Mais récemment, un très important prix a été pris pour le Prix Kilam pour une contribution scientifique dans la lutte contre l'ATV au Canada. Merci, Dr. Winberg. Après... Désolé. Oui, 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 il parle d'abord. Nous sommes très heureux... Excusez-moi pour mon anglais, mais c'est mieux que le français des femmes à la réception du congrès. Je pense que à la réception du congrès à Montréal, les gens devraient être vraiment bilingues. Dr. Jacques Peppin est professeur au département de microbiologie et d'infections à l'université de Sherbrooke au Québec. Après avoir diplômé, Dr. Peppin a travaillé dans le hôpital district de Zaire pendant quatre ans, formé en médecine interne et en infections. Il a travaillé pour le Conseil Médical Britannique de la Gambia et est revenu au Canada en 1990. En 1998, il a obtenu un diplôme en médecine communiquable et d'épidémiologie. Ses recherches incluent les tripanosomias africains, l'ATV doux et l'infection sexuellement transmise en Afrique du Sud. Il a géré de grands projets de prévention de l'ATV chez les travailleurs sexuels en Ghana et Togo, financés par SIDA et USID, et sert comme conseiller pour le WHO-TDR. Plus récemment, il a étudié le rôle des interventions médicales contre la maladie tropicale lors de l'émergence d'ATV et d'ATV II en Guinée-Bissau, Cameroun et Afrique Centrale République. Il vient de publier « L'origine de l'ATV ». C'est un livre fascinant, un travail fascinant. Dr. Peppin vient de recevoir deux prix récemment : le Prix scientifique de l'année de Radio Canada, CBC, et le Prix du sérum de centre d'études de recherche internationale de l'université de Montréal. Nous sommes très heureux de recevoir vous, Dr. Peppin. Et vous avez la parole.
Merci beaucoup, Dr. Thomas. Je dois m'excuser en avance. Je lutte contre un rhume commun. Si ma voix est un peu brûlée, c'est à cause de ce virus et pas à cause de mon participation à la riote d'hier. Donc, mon discours se concentrera sur l'histoire de l'HIV dans un lieu très spécifique, Leopoldville, qui est maintenant connu sous le nom de Kinshasa. Et comme vous voyez, il a joué un rôle clé lors de l'amplification précoce du nombre d'infectés et finalement lors de la dissemination du virus partout dans le monde. Est-ce que j'ai la prochaine ligne ? Je ne suis pas sûr de savoir si ça marche. Ok, oui, bien. Alors... Eh bien... Oui. Alors, la recherche sur le rôle d'Afrique Centrale dans l'origine de l'ATV a commencé très tôt après la reconnaissance de la nouvelle maladie, apparemment de la nouvelle maladie. Et vous pouvez voir sur cette diapositive quelques photos de projet SIDA, qui était un projet joint entre la CDC, la NIH et l'Institut de médecine tropique à Antwerp. Et vous pourriez reconnaître la late Jonathan Mann, qui était le premier directeur de ce projet. Et bien sûr, à droite, Peter Piatt, qui sera plus tard le directeur fondateur de UNAIDS. Très tôt dans cette période, les gens ont commencé à suspecter que l'origine du virus se trouvait en Afrique Centrale. Les premiers arguments étaient peut-être en rétrospect un peu naïfs, mais ils ont finalement été prouvés être corrects. Un premier argument était ce qui était considéré à l'époque comme une haute prévalence dans la population adulte générale. À Kinshasa, c'était quelque part entre 5 et 8%. À Kigali-Rwanda, c'était environ 15%. Et les gens pensaient :« Si la prévalence est si élevée, il doit être parce que le virus a été là depuis longtemps. » Puis, les gens ont commencé à regarder la collection de séro dont ils avaient accumulé depuis plusieurs années. Alors, les gens sont rentrés dans leurs frisiers et ont commencé à tester la séro qui avait été collectée plus tôt. Et pour résumer, les seuls specimens qui étaient positifs pour l'HIV et qui avaient été obtenus avant 1980 venaient tous du même pays, Zaire, qui est maintenant connu comme la République démocratique du Congo. Maintenant, un autre argument était que c'était possible de récupérer des isolates de l'HIV. Et l'un de ces, qui est toujours aujourd'hui le plus vieux isolat de l'HIV, a été récupéré d'un sample de sang qui avait été obtenu à Kinshasa en 1959. Et il a fallu environ 20 ou 25 ans avant que le second isolat soit récupéré. Et celui-ci venait d'une biopsie lymphno-bio, qui avait également été obtenu à Kinshasa, celui-là en 1960. Mais vraiment, il est devenu certain que l'origine du virus était en fait Afrique Centrale avec la publication de ce papier en 1999. Vous avez sur la diapositive le principal investigateur qui a coordonné cette recherche, Beatrice Hahn, formerly à l'université d'Alabama à Birmingham. Et dans ce papier, il était assez courageux en rétrospect parce que leur conclusion était basée sur seulement quatre isolates du virus simion, SIV-CPZ. Il y avait trois isolates de la chimpanzé centrale africaine, qui s'appelle Pantroglotitesroglotites, et un isolat d'une autre subspecies de chimpanzé. Et vous pouvez voir dans le filogénique trois que les boîtes rouges correspondent à des isolates de Pantroglotitesroglotites. Et vous pouvez voir que c'est nesté dans les isolates humaines de HIV-1. Ça a été assez courageux à l'époque, mais finalement, de nombreux autres papiers ont été publiés qui ont confirmé cette conclusion. Donc, il n'y a plus de débat à ce sujet. Ça rapproche donc la zone géographique où la pandémie a commencé. Je n'ai pas de point, malheureusement, mais si vous regardez le mappe en couleur orange, cela correspond à la distribution de la chimpanzé centrale africaine, Pantroglotitesroglotites. Et vous pouvez voir, c'est une zone relativement petite : Cameroun Sud, une petite partie de la République Centrale Africaine, Congo-Brasaville, Gabon et Guinée Équatoriale. Il n'y a donc absolument aucun doute que le premier patient, celui qui a commencé la pandémie, vivait quelque part là. Je veux juste attirer votre attention sur le fait que le Congo belge, ou le DRC aujourd'hui, est situé sur l'autre côté du rivière Congo. Donc, le premier patient ne pouvait peut-être pas être là. Mais puisqu'il est juste sur l'autre côté du rivière Congo, il a été très facile pour le virus finalement de atteindre Leopoldville. Maintenant, beaucoup d'informations supplémentaires peuvent être extraits des données concernant la diversité génétique de l'HIV-1. Donc, l'HIV-1 est maintenant divisé en quatre groupes. Et si vous séquentez les acides nucléiques de ces groupes, ils divergent l'un de l'autre par quelque chose comme entre 20 et 50%. Maintenant, il est aussi assez clair que chacun de ces quatre groupes correspond à un distinct et un seul épisode de transmission transmissive cross-species de chimpanzé à l'homme. Il y avait quatre transmissions qui ont été détectées plusieurs années plus tard. Donc, l'une a conduit à la pandémie causant l'HIV-1 groupe M avec 67 millions de personnes infectées par ce premier patient. Vous pouvez voir que le groupe O infectait seulement 10 000 personnes, la plupart d'entre eux en Cameroun et les pays adjacents à Cameroun. Le groupe N, c'est très limité : 13 cas quand j'ai fait la diapositive. Je pense que maintenant, il y a 14 cas, tous exceptés les derniers de Cameroun. Et le dernier groupe, qui a été récemment découvert il y a environ trois ou quatre ans, est le groupe P. Et celui-ci, jusqu'à présent, il y a seulement deux personnes, les deux sont camerouniens, infectés par ce groupe. Maintenant, l'HIV-1 groupe M est plus subdividé en neuf subtypes. Et par un consensus de scientifiques, un subtype est divisé quelque part entre 10 et 20% de divergence quand vous regardez les séquences. Donc, les subtypes sont assez différents des groupes. Les subtypes représentent l'évolution de l'HIV chez les humains d'une seule strate initiale. Donc, les subtypes représentent en fait l'accumulation de erreurs de replication. Le subtype le plus important partout dans le monde est le subtype C. Il représente environ 50% de la charge globale des infections d'HIV. Le subtype B, bien sûr, est celui qui prédomine en Amérique du Nord, en Caraïbes et en Europe du Sud aussi. Et puis vous avez sept autres subtypes. Et c'est possible de... Ok, désolé. Il est possible d'utiliser les études de la diversité génétique pour comprendre les évènements passés qui ont provoqué la pandémie d'HIV. Donc, si vous avez plus de diversité génétique d'HIV dans un lieu donné, cela reflète deux choses. La première, elle reflète la durée de la présence du virus dans ce lieu spécifique, mais elle reflète aussi l'intensité de la transmission. Donc, en d'autres termes, si vous avez un virus HIV qui est introduit dans un endroit où il n'y a qu'un secondaire de HIV chaque cinq ans, vous aurez peu de diversité. Mais si le virus est introduit en même temps dans un lieu où chaque trois mois, il y a une nouvelle génération de cas au fil du temps parce que vous avez plus de personnes infectées, plus de production virale, vous avez un nombre supérieur de mutations, cela entraînera la diversité. Ok ? Donc, la diversité peut être très utile pour comprendre ce qui s'est passé. Sur ce mappe, vous avez un mappe de l'Afrique. Chaque cercle correspond à un pays distinct. Chaque couleur correspond à un subtype distinct. Donc, vous pouvez voir que en Afrique du Sud, qui est la région du monde qui rencontre le pire problème actuellement avec l'HIV, vous pouvez voir que c'est presque seulement un seul subtype, le subtype C. Ce que cela signifie, c'est que cette région d'Afrique du Sud a été infectée beaucoup plus récemment que d'autres parties du continent. Et si vous regardez au milieu du continent, le cercle avec les deux cercles avec le plus grand nombre de couleurs différentes correspond en fait à la République démocratique du Congo et sur l'autre côté du rivière, à Brasaville. Et en fait, la plupart des isolates de ces deux pays, bien sûr, ont été obtenus dans les villes capitales. Donc, c'est exactement le lieu où le virus a réussi à fleurir et finalement à diversifier. Maintenant, c'est intéressant parce que lorsque les outils de la biologie moléculaire ont beaucoup amélioré, les gens sont rentrés dans ces samples qui avaient été collectés en 1984-85 par Jonathan Mann à Kinshasa. Et en gros, dans ces samples, vous pouviez trouver tous les subtypes. Donc, tous les neuf subtypes étaient déjà présents et vous pouviez trouver déjà à l'époque beaucoup de récombines. En d'autres termes, 27 ans plus tôt, il y avait déjà beaucoup plus de diversité d'HIV à Kinshasa et à Brasaville que vous pouvez trouver aujourd'hui ailleurs dans le monde. Donc, c'est clairement le lieu où le virus a réussi à fleurir. Pour ceux d'entre vous... Excusez-moi. Pour ceux d'entre vous qui ne sont pas familiers avec cette région, c'est une photo satellite de l'area. Donc, vous avez le rivière Congo. Sur le côté nord du rivière, vous avez Brasaville. Sur le côté sud, vous avez Kinshasa. Et la distance entre les deux côtés du rivière est seulement quatre kilomètres. Comme vous pouvez voir sur la photographie en bas de la diapositive, dans l'ère coloniale, il y avait beaucoup de circulation entre les deux villes. Il y avait un bateau, un ferry qui traversait le rivière chaque 20 minutes. Donc, des milliers de personnes voyageaient en arrière et en avant entre Leopoldville et Brasaville. Et donc, pour le but d'aller voir les maladies infectantes, en particulier les pathogènes sexuellement transmis, ils peuvent être considérés comme une conurbation unique. Maintenant, plus de progrès dans la compréhension de l'histoire de l'HIV est arrivé avec la publication de ce papier. Je pense que le leader de ce groupe, Michael Waraby, un Canadien, est venu ici il y a quelques années à la même réunion pour présenter. Et en gros, ce papier décrit l'utilisation de ce qu'on appelle un tournoi moléculaire. Sans aller dans les détails, un tournoi moléculaire, il est basé sur la rate de substitution ou d'erreurs de replication dans diverses parties du génome de l'HIV. Et puis, il est possible de revenir en temps en utilisant ces modèles. Et en gros, dans ce papier, la conclusion de Waraby était que... Il avait en gros deux modèles différents. Donc, un modèle disait que l'aîné commun, donc le premier, le virus de la première personne qui a commencé la pandémie existait en 1908. Selon un second modèle, c'était en 1921. Et bien sûr, il y avait un intervalle de confiance sur ces deux estimations. Donc, en gros, pour résumer, nous pouvons être relativement sûrs que l'aîné de tous les groupes de l'HIV-1 groupe M existait probablement dans les premières trois décennies du 20e siècle. Maintenant, sur cette diapositive, vous avez un graphique, qui est de ce même papier, qui montre l'évolution au fil du temps du nombre de personnes infectées au Congo Belge. La ligne noire est le nombre le plus probable de personnes infectées et les couleurs bleues correspondent aux intervalles de confiance de 95% sur ces estimations. Et juste si vous regardez à droite, vous pouvez voir que c'est une échelle logarithmique. Donc, en gros, ce que ça montre est que pendant plusieurs décennies, probablement pendant quelque chose comme 50 ans, le nombre de personnes infectées reste stable ou très lentement augmente. Et si vous regardez à droite du graphique, vous pouvez voir que le nombre de personnes infectées était quelque chose comme 100. Et puis, commençant dans les premiers années 1950, la ligne droite, parce que c'est une échelle logarithmique, signifie qu'il y avait une amplification exponentielle du nombre de personnes infectées commençant dans les premiers 50 ans. Nous allons essayer de comprendre ce qui s'est passé dans ce lieu pour le virus qui avait été prisonnier mais assez stable pour s'extender dramatiquement. Leopoldville, la capitale du Congo Belge, a été organisée pendant une très longue période de temps comme en gros un camp de travail. Les colonies belges voulaient avoir à Leopoldville seulement les hommes qui étaient nécessaires soit par le gouvernement colonial soit par les entreprises coloniales. Il y avait beaucoup de bouquins. Vous avez besoin de plusieurs documents pour pouvoir entrer à Leopoldville. Et pendant de nombreuses années, la率 de non-emploi à Leopoldville était à 1%. Vous pouvez penser que c'est extraordinaire. Ils avaient un bon truc : si vous perdez votre emploi et que personne ne vous a besoin, vous deviez partir. Pour la même raison, la migration des femmes à Leopoldville était discouragée. Les femmes ne étaient pas nécessaires pour les entreprises coloniales. Comme vous pouvez voir sur cette diapositive, comme conséquence de ces politiques, un très fort équilibre de genres a développé et persisté depuis longtemps à Leopoldville. Donc, c'est la proportion d'hommes adultes pour chaque femme adulte. Vous pouvez voir que pour la plupart du periodisme colonial, c'était environ deux. Il y avait deux hommes pour chaque femme. Mais si vous retirez de cette population les hommes et les femmes mariées, vous obtenez une proportion qui était plus ou moins de cinq ou six. Et dans certains groupes ethniques, pour des raisons sociales et anthropologiques, la proportion d'hommes à femmes était en fait plus grande que 100. Les conséquences de cet équilibre de genres étaient complètement prédictibles. Donc, les historiens ont décrit Leopoldville, surtout pendant la Seconde Guerre mondiale, de devenir ce qu'ils appellent la capitale de l'ambiance. Ambiance signifie la fête, l'atmosphère de fête. Et les historiens ont décrit trois pilotes pour cette ambiance : les bars, et il y avait des centaines de bars partout à Leopoldville, les musiciens et les femmes libres. Les femmes libres, la façon dont elles opéraient, elles pratiquaient, je pense que cela pourrait être mieux décrit comme une forme de semi-prostitution. Elles avaient trois ou quatre clients réguliers. Robert visitait les femmes chaque dimanche, Albert chaque vendredi et Peter chaque vendredi. C'était très important pour elles de ne pas avoir deux clients en même temps, le même jour. Donc, elles avaient une agenda assez stricte. Elles fournissaient à ces hommes des services assez diversifiés. Ça incluait un bon repas, prendre soin de la ménage, peut-être travailler sur le coupe-tête et finalement, bien sûr, le intercourse sexuel. En échange, plutôt que d'être payé sur une base de frais pour le service, les femmes ont été accordées un type de soutien financier régulier par chacun de leurs clients. Sans aller dans les détails, les modèles mathématiques, je peux vous dire que ce type de partenariat sexuel concombre était bon pour la persistance de l'HIV, mais certainement pas pour l'extension dramatique qui a commencé dans les premiers années 1950. Donc, si ce n'était pas sex, qu'est-ce que ça pourrait être ? Je pense que les yeux de plusieurs scientifiques étaient en fait ouverts avec la publication de ce papier à Lancet en 2000. C'est un papier qui décrit une transmission dramatique du virus d'hypathite C en Égypte. Bien sûr, Égypte n'est pas habité par les chimpanzés, donc ce n'est pas l'area où l'HIV émerge. Mais pour démontrer que les épidémies iatrogéniques peuvent être massives, c'est difficile. Donc, en gros, ce qui s'est passé, c'est que dans les années 1950, puis dans les années 1960, le gouvernement égyptien a embarqué dans un programme pour éliminer une maladie parasitaire appelée schistosomiasis. Ils sont allés, ils avaient des teams mobiles, ils sont allés dans tous les villages. Et en gros, tout le monde a été traité avec un médicament intravenin qui était basé sur... C'était un médicament antimonial, basé sur l'antimoney. Et ils ont... Vous savez, dans un village donné, ils pouvaient donner 1 000 injections intravenatives dans un seul jour. Et bien sûr, les syringes et les cuillères ne étaient pas sterilisés entre les patients. Et le résultat, que vous pouvez voir sur le graphique à droite de la diapositive, c'est que dans de nombreuses parties d'Égypte, dans les cohortes âgées plus âgées, en gros, presque la moitié de la population est séropositive pour l'HIV. Maintenant, en même temps, il y avait des publications, la plupart d'entre elles dans des journaux français, de personnes qui ont mesuré la prévalence de l'HIV. Et l'HIV, bien sûr, est un marqueur de transmission parentale de virus sanguins parce que sa transmission sexuelle n'est pas très efficace. Et vous pouvez voir le même type de prévalence. Le graphique est organisé de l'autre côté, donc c'est selon le anniversaire de naissance. Mais en gros, en Cameroun Sud, une région qui était habitée, bien sûr, par la chimpanzé, la chimpanzé centrale africaine, vous pouvez voir que dans de nombreux villages, la moitié de la population était séropositive pour l'HIV. Ça a donc montré qu'il y avait aussi là un niveau dramatique de transmission iatrogénique de au moins un autre virus sanguin. Ces études, un peu étranges, n'ont pas essayé de identifier quelles interventions de santé ont conduit à cette transmission de l'HIV. Donc, je pensais que c'était intéressant. Et je conduisais de plusieurs études avec des collaborateurs en Afrique et certains collaborateurs au Canada. Je ne sais pas si elle est ici aujourd'hui, mais Dr. Anneclore Labbe à Maisonneuve-Rosemont et mes collègues Eric Frost, Mireille Plamandon et Sherbrooke. Donc, en gros, nous avons fait trois études. La première était à Guinée-Bissau, où nous utilisons comme sujet le virus qui est prisonnier, l'HIV-2. Maintenant, pour ceux d'entre vous qui ne sont pas familiers avec l'HIV-2, ce qui est remarquable comparé à l'HIV-1, c'est qu'il est compatible avec la survie prolongée. Ok ? La proportion de mortalité, si vous êtes infecté de l'HIV-2, est à deux comparé à la... compared to ten for HIV-1. So we, the first study, we were able to show that in this country, that HIV-2 had actually been transmitted through several parenteral routes. One of them was the treatment of African trypenousomiasis with intravenous drugs. Another one was the treatment of tuberculosis with streptomycin. So streptomycin was given intramuscularly, and the patient received between 60 and 100 injections of streptomycin. Then we went to the Central African Republic. There, we use again HIV as a marker of transmission of viruses. And again, there, it was associated with the treatment of African trypenousomiasis before 1950. HTLV-1, that's another interesting proxy for HIV, because it's a retrovirus, which comes actually from the same chimpanzee reservoir. HTLV-1 was associated with having received injections of pentamidine. That was, that was given every six months for the prevention of African trypenousomiasis. And it was also associated with having received blood transfusions. In southern Cameroon, in a population aged 60 years or more, 55% of that population was HIV serop positive. The main driver there had been the intravenous treatment of malaria with intravenous quinine. So you have three countries, three different viruses, several different medical interventions, which were associated with their transmission. So I think that's pretty convincing that HIV-1 was transmitted through this route as well. Now, if we go back to Leopoldville, try to understand what happened there. There was a large Belgian population in Leopoldville, so about 35,000 in the 1950s. And of course, the goal of the colonial authorities was that those that you would see on the left side of the slide would not end up on the right side of the slide, in the cemetery for expatriates. So to do that, they, they organized and implemented very, very comprehensive screening programs among the Africans. They wanted to identify those who had certain tropical diseases and to treat these patients so as to protect indirectly the Belgian population. It was very successful. And as a consequence, there was little sleeping sickness, little schistoe, little leprosy, and little yaws in Leopoldville. But the one place where a lot of injections were made was this place, which you can see on the, the bottom part of the slide. So the Dispensaire Antivinérien, basically the STD clinic. It was opened in 1929 by a charity, the Quaroche Congolaise. And basically, in that clinic, they took care of patients who showed up there with symptoms of STDs, so discharge or an ulcer. But they also took care of the migrants. So the people who came from up country, when they arrived in Leopoldville, it was compulsory for them to show up there and to be tested for STDs. But the main, the, the largest number of clients in that clinic were the free women. So a free woman was a woman who was living on her own, without a husband in the same house. So she was considered by the colonial authorities to be a prostitute. And they, so they had a card, and they had to show up there every month. There, there was a check, a checkup for STDs. And if they were found to be STD-free, their card, their health card was stamped. So they were okay with the law for another month, another two months. And then they would come back regularly for that purpose. A lot of work at the STD clinic was the treatment of syphilis. At the time, the treatment of syphilis, that was before antibiotics were available. So it was based on arsenical drugs. And the usual treatment regimen was one injection intravenously every week for between 12 and 15 weeks. Moreover, after they had been treated for what they thought was syphilis, they repeated the serology, non-tripenomal syphilis serology. And whenever that was positive, the medical thinking at the time was that the patient needed to be retreated. So many patients actually received 25 or 40 or 50 such intravenous injections. The peak activity of that clinic was in 1953, where they, you can see the, what it looked like at the time. So in the small building, which only had four rooms, they gave that year 154,000 injections, about half of them intravenously. Now, in retrospect, when we look at what happened there, it's quite extraordinary that, in fact, the very large majority of these patients probably never had syphilis at all. In this part of the world, there was a tropical disease which is endemic. It's called Yaws. And it's caused by a subspecies of Trichonema pallidum. So the one causing syphilis is Trichonema pallidum pallidum. And the one causing Yaws is Trichonema pallidum pertenuae. And, and it was very common. It was usually acquired during childhood. And then you develop antibodies, and these antibodies persist for life. And of course, the serological tests for syphilis at the time, and even nowadays, they, they cannot distinguish between syphilis and Yaws. So you have a positive serology. And looking at their annual reports, you can see that at the end of the 40s and at the beginning of the 1950s, the doctors there were beginning to wonder if they were really wasting their time. And out of seven, more than 7,000 patients with syphilis during those years, only 3% had showed up there with either a genital ulcer or signs of secondary or tertiary syphilis. All the others, 97% of these patients, they were treated because they had a positive serology. On this graph, you can see the evolution in the number of injections at this clinic. So the peak is what I told you, 1953. And you can see that after that, there was a very sharp decline in the number of injections. There were two or three reasons for that decline in the number of injections. One of these was the publication of this paper. You can be forgiven if you, if you have not read it. It was published in the Belgian Annals of Tropical Medicine in 1953. Dr. Paul Behayt, who was doing the internal medicine at the, at the hospital for the black people, that's how it was called. And he described an outbreak of what was then called inoculation hepatitis. And basically, in that paper, he described 32 cases of quote-unquote inoculation hepatitis among patients who had been treated for syphilis at the STD clinic. Now, I can tell you, this was certainly hepatitis B, because hepatitis C usually will, would not cause a substantial jaundice when you have acute HIV. So that was certainly hepatitis B. And it's quite extraordinary that an outbreak could develop and be recognized, because actually, in Central Africa, by the time you become an adult, there's about a 95% probability that you've already been infected with HBV. So the fraction of the patient who were susceptible to HBV was at most 5%. Now, Dr. Behayt was kind enough to go to the clinic, look at what they did with the syringes and the needles. And there's a full page in his paper, which describes how, how these were handled. And basically, they were merely rinsed. So an intravenous injection was given. And then you just rinse it with water. And then, five minutes later, you use the same syringe and the same needle for the next patient. Now, I, I cannot prove it formally, but I think for a number of reasons, I believe that this clinic represented, might have represented the perfect storm in the history of HIV. So in the same clinic, you had the migrants. So the men were coming from the areas where the chimpanzee was living. And you had the free women. And then you, you had the iatrogenic transmission of HBV. And probably, there was some iatrogenic transmission of HIV-1 as well. And so it was transmitted to women who were practicing a form of semi-prostitution, who had several regular sexual partners. And the timing of this outbreak of hepatitis and the peak activity of the clinic, I remind you, it coincides exactly with the exponential amplification, which I showed you early, so in the early 1950s. So I think it's quite likely that this clinic played a very important role. Now, it's interesting to see how eventually the political events in the Congo had an impact on the, on the course of the epidemic. So this, you can see on the left-hand side, Patrice Lumumba, who was the prime minister of the Congo at the end of June 1960, when the country became independent. And on the right side, a few months later, you can see that he was in, in dire straits, in the back of a military truck. Eventually, he would be executed not, not long after that. So the Congo became independent, and five days later, there was a mutiny within the army. Ten days later, the secession of Katanga, and then another secession, a civil war. And eventually, hundreds of thousands of refugees came to Kinshasa or Leopoldville, because it was safe. And within a couple of years, the unemployment rate, which was below 5% in 1960, went up to more than 50%. So there was a massive popularization of this population, very acute and very severe. And one consequence of that was a change in the pattern of prostitution. And that's been described by social scientists, who wrote about that in the early 1960s. So basically, what, what happened was that the men didn't have enough money to provide regular support to a free woman. So they would just buy, you know, a quick session of transactional sex. And so you had prostitutes who, instead of having three or four clients per year, they had three or four per day, so more than 1,000 every year. There were brothels, which appeared in Leopoldville. And so the conditions were now ripe for the sexual amplification of HIV-1 in Leopoldville. So in the 1960s, it probably spread within the core groups, so the sex workers and their clients. And eventually, in the 1970s, there is some data from sera which had been collected among women who were bringing their child to an under-five clinic. In 1970, the prevalence in the general adult population, represented by these women, was 0.25%. And 10 years later, in the same population, it was 3%. So this was the generalization of the epidemic in Kinshasa. Now, to recapitulate and to summarize all of that, and I didn't mention that, but the virus, the, the Simeon virus, SIV CPZ, we think it's been present among chimpanzees for at least 1,000 years. So there were certainly hunters who got infected before. The hunter would infect his wife, or his wives, if he was polygamist. Yeah, all these people, these two or three people would die of AIDS 10 years later in the village, and that would be the end of it. And in the first few decades of the 20th century, the expansion of the, the virus was driven by two factors, which were themselves related to the, to the European colonization of, of the Congo. So the social changes, urbanization and urban prostitution. And as I've explained to you, the well-intentioned public health interventions, which provided a, a route of parenteral transmission. Eventually, the virus initially probably traveled down the Congo River, as I mentioned, reached Leopoldville and Brazzaville. And from there, there are several studies which document how it spread to Central Africa and eventually to other parts of Africa. And it also, from there, it's pretty certain that it spread from the Congo to Haiti around 1967, from there to the United States, and there to Western Europe. So one question, which may, maybe I'll discuss later on during the, the period for questions. So all, all these factors, and as I mentioned earlier, there are four groups of HIV-1, which had very different fates. So HIV group M infected 67 million people, and the others were much less successful. So there were probably also viral characteristics associated with HIV, HIV-1 group M, which facilitated, facilitated its transmission among humans. So that was a quick summary of the history. If you're interested, the book will be on sale at the back of the room, close to the door. And I'll be happy to answer your questions.
Thank you, Dr. Peppin. We'll take the, the questions after. Fascinating work and seeing how all the links between colonialisation, travel, sex, poverty, and the doctor's work sometime, eh? How we, we, we want to do good and sometime we are not successful. And the other thing I, I retain is that too many men and too many free women is not necessarily a good thing. It's, it's a high-risk population. So Dr., from where, where we came, maybe to where we go, Dr. Weinberg, maybe, what's in the future?
Merci beaucoup, réveillon. Merci tout le monde. Merci de l'invitation. Tout d'abord, I want to hold up again the book of Dr. Peppin, which I've read, and I highly recommend it. It's endorsed by some people you know or have heard of. It's endorsed by Professor Alan Ronald. It's endorsed by Professor Max Essex. And it had a wonderful review in The New York Times, wonderful review in many other distinguished international newspapers by leading scientists. And it's really a fantastic book. So, so you should all try to buy a copy before they run out. And don't forget to buy Dr. Rooty's book at, at the same time. I guess I need to write a book someday, but... So I'm gonna speak about, you know, a, a theme that I, I think was addressed in, in Dr. Peppin's eloquent remarks. He, he pointed out how excellent intentions sometimes might have had harmful effects in regard to transmissions of HIV. And, you know, there's an old saying, "The road to hell is paved with good intentions." So let's talk about HIV. Has the epidemic peaked? And, you know, one of the subjects that interests me enormously is HIV drug resistance. And, you know, in countries like Canada and the United States and the countries of Western Europe, it's probably, you know, fair to say that the HIV epidemic in terms of new cases really does seem to, to have peaked in, in some ways. At least, with the exception of pockets of tragic situations, such as in Saskatchewan. You know, we, we have to say, we, we have not stood by idly and watched the epidemic spread. We've tried to intervene, and I think in many cases, we've been successful. But we have to always realize that on an international basis, the progress is far, far below that which we would like to attain. And for those of us who care about drug access in developing country settings, such as those that Professor Peppin just described, it is absolutely true that there are probably more people who still become newly infected each more people who still become newly infected each year by HIV than are able to gain access to antiretroviral therapy. Now, one of the concerns, I think, that we have to bear in mind as we move forward with drug rollout programs, is the possibility that the levels of drug resistance that we have seen in Canada, and I include in this cases of transmitted drug resistance, will also take place in developing country settings. There are really relatively few reports on this. But unfortunately, I think that the reason there are so few reports on what is going on in developing country settings in terms of transmitted drug resistance is twofold. First, there are not adequate resources in most developing country settings to keep track of what is actually going on in regard to transmitted drug resistance. And second, and very importantly, because these drug rollout programs have not been in existence for very long, it may be too soon to speak of high rates of transmitted drug resistance, which may be something that is going to happen and that tragically we will find out about after it's too late for a lot of people to have benefited from some of the lessons that we have long been acquainted with in the context of richer countries. And one of the things that we must point to is that cheap drugs in developing country settings got used for far longer than was reasonable, and probably the chief culprit is a drug called D4T or Stavudine that we know promotes non-adherence and promotes the drug resistance mutation known as K65R in reverse transcriptase. And it's quite possible that this mutation is already present in countries such as those in South Africa and Botswana, and countries largely where subtype C viruses are predominant to an extent that will now preclude the use of excellent second-line regimens that include such drugs as Tenofivir because this mutation will preclude those regimens from being fully effective. Should that turn out to be the case, it will truly be tragic. This is a slide showing that the K65R resistance mutation can be selected faster in subtype C than in subtype B viruses. And there are adequate studies now that have been carried out in Botswana. This is from our own studies in that country, showing high rates of K65R. But more recently, studies from Malawi, led by Mina Hosseinpour and colleagues, published in AIDS in 2009. And most recently, at the conference called Croy in Seattle earlier this year, a study by Vincent Marconi and colleagues in South Africa, showing that rates of development of the K65R mutation are as high among treatment failures as 40%. This is staggering and may have consequences that we'll be reading about in the newspapers. But in some ways, you know, we are fortunate because there are some mutations, and the K65R mutation is one of these, that like the M184V mutation, has a very strongly adverse effect on the ability of HIV to replicate. You know, in the ideal world, when you have a virus that is resistant to an antiviral drug or a bacterium that is resistant to an antibiotic, the organism will sacrifice something in regard to its replication capacity. And this then will have a positive benefit from an epidemiologic standpoint in regard to the ability of that drug-resistant virus or bacterium to be transmitted to other recipients. And we have seen this in the context of viruses that contain K65R or M184V, even though these mutations and these viruses may be transmitted sexually, what we also know is that the ability of these mutations to survive the transmission event is extremely limited. Because what happens in the newly infected host, you wind up getting a back mutation or a reversion, and then the wild-type virus actually grows out, and that virus is drug-sensitive. And at least so far, that has been the case. But, you know, in some ways, this is similar for another situation for which we really should be very grateful, and that is herpes viruses. Because herpes viruses can be treated with drugs like acyclovir and ganociclovir, and it's extremely fortunate that the herpes viruses that can in fact become resistant to these antiviral agents are not transmitted with high efficiency. This is something for which we should be grateful, but for which we should also consider ourselves to be extremely lucky. Because no one would have predicted that the emergence of drug-resistant herpes viruses would not have become a much more urgent problem than in fact is the case. I repeat, we are fortunate and we are lucky because we don't have the ability to predict a priori how the emergence of a particular drug resistance mutation, be it HIV-related or herpes-related or anything else related, is going to impact on the potential ability of that mutation to be sexually transmitted and, for that matter, transmitted through other means as well. So we have to remember, in the context of HIV, HIV is not a herpes virus. HIV is a retrovirus. HIV can recombine and emerge in new forms all the time. This is a matter of concern, and we should not look at situations regarding herpes viruses or other viruses and say, "We've done a great job." The worst mistake that we can ever make is to develop attitudes of arrogance in regard to any form of infectious agent because we should have learned long ago that some of our best intentions, and as Dr. Peppin pointed out, some of our best efforts to combat infectious diseases can sometimes wind up having the most tragic consequences. So I'll just leave you with the notion that even here in Quebec, as we know, we speak of clusters of transmissions of infectious agents, including HIV. And what we also know is that all too often, these transmission clusters, which exist here in our own communities and across Canada, can involve transmission of viruses that are drug-resistant. And the most important mutations that are associated with the transmission of HIV-drug resistance mutations, and we know this, are mutations that are associated with the category of drug called non-nucleoside reverse transcriptase inhibitors. And this is true for the reason that I mentioned before. It all has to do with viral fitness, and the fact is that to virtually 100% extent, the mutations that impact on the non-nucleoside reverse transcriptase inhibitor family of drugs do not affect HIV fitness. So when these mutations are transmitted, in fact, they survive in newly infected hosts. Obviously, therefore, when you consider the context of transmission clusters, this is something to be aware of and to be concerned about from the standpoint of public health here and throughout the world. And finally, recent work by our group has shown that if you take two different mutations, one associated with non-nucleoside reverse transcriptase inhibitors, that's the mutation called E138K, it has a very negative impact in its own right. It is the best example so far of an NNRTI mutation that does impact on fitness. Put it together in the same virus with a different mutation, M184V, that has a negative impact on fitness. And what you see on the extreme left of this slide is that these two mutations, when found together in the same virus, has resulted in a situation in which replicative fitness is completely restored to wild-type levels. This kind of result could not have been predicted. This kind of result is something that just happens. And there are other examples of these kinds of compensatory situations that are now emerging in the literature as we move forward. And again, this is happening in regard to other drug resistance mutations associated even with other drug classes, such as integrase inhibitors and protease inhibitors. This should teach us that this virus is constantly able to evolve, constantly able to recombine, and has the ability to constantly reemerge as an entity that has the potential to do us enormous harm, to also do harm to communities around the world because it is a retrovirus. So I'll leave you with that sobering thought. Thank everybody in our group for working hard to help our lab stay relevant. Et merci à vous tous pour votre attention.
Max, on va prendre quelques questions. We'll take a few questions, just ask to present yourself and maybe rapid questions.
My name is Hugh. I'm from Ottawa. My question goes to Dr. Peppin. Thank you for your talk and thank you for your work. It's really interesting. Because when HIV pandemic started in Africa, I started working as a young physician back in 1996. And I can indeed confirm here that we struggled with many, many issues at that time. Probably now, we can understand a few more things. And HIV cases were doubling in Brazzaville, where I was working as a young physician. Every six months, every six months, we were having the double of HIV patients we were seeing. And we just, we have no means to treat both patients. My question is, there was some theory about the possibility that HIV transmission has also been triggered by the vaccinations, the polio vaccine. In your work, you just mentioned about medication, about injections. Can you comment on that? The second question is about, one of the things that I've seen when I was working as a young physician back in 1986 with HIV patients in Brazzaville, in the majority of countries around Central Africa, the prevalence of HIV was much higher in the ports, cities. Cities were around the oceans, and the prevalence was much less in the continent, within the continent. With the exception of Rwanda, and I think that you mentioned that in your work, that the prevalence was much higher in Rwanda than in Kigali. So my question is, how can you reconcile these two patterns of higher prevalence in the outer cities around the ocean and lesser prevalence in the continent?
Thank you. So, I'll take maybe the second batch of questions about what happened in Rwanda. I showed you indeed that the prevalence was about 15% at some time, but we know for sure that in the case of Rwanda, this high prevalence represented a high incidence over a few years. So the virus had arrived there much later. And actually, if you look at the subtypes of HIV in Rwanda, it's dominated by one subtype. I'm not sure which, I think it's subtype A probably. And Burundi, which is just next door, it's a different subtype. So it kind of shows that both of these countries were infected by different subtypes coming from the Congo. In the case of Rwanda, there was also, in the city of Kigali, there was a lot of prostitution. There was also a lot of genital ulcers diseases and a lot, a lack of circumcision. So there were several factors which, at the end of the day, created a high incidence over just a few years. Now, the question about immunization. Vaccines in general, I don't think that they played an important role during the colonial era because the vaccines which were used then, basically, it was smallpox and yellow fever. They were given intradermally. So it was not a deep injection, it was just an intradermal injection or a scratch on the skin. So I think this type of immunization was much less likely to transmit blood-borne viruses. Now, perhaps you alluded to the theory also that the development of an experimental vaccines against polio played a role. There was a book written by a British journalist called The River, which supported that hypothesis. And now, this hypothesis has been completely refuted, disproven. And there are several reasons why we are sure that this did not happen. The main reason is that some old vials of that experimental vaccine were located and they were tested. There was no HIV and no other retrovirus in the samples. But more importantly, there was no chimpanzee DNA in the samples. They found DNA of small monkeys. And that confirmed what people working on vaccines at the time always said, that nobody would have used chimpanzee cells to produce a vaccine.
Autre question, en anglais, français? Monsieur Hume?
Merci. Je vais la poser en français, c'est tellement complexe. Je peux reconnaître que Leopoldville est un complexe qui a permis, ou qui pourrait avoir permis, l'émergence du VIH dans son environnement. Je suis étonné que vous concluiez, en tout cas dans la présentation, assez rapidement sur la position géographique de cette origine. Je comprends pas que on regarde pas aussi d'autres facteurs culturels, d'autres facteurs de comportement sexuel, d'autres facteurs dans la vaste région, qui peuvent aussi avoir été des moments ou des complexes qui auraient pu permettre une autre forme d'émergence du VIH.
Okay. Well, I kind of focused the presentation on Leopoldville, but it doesn't mean that the whole story happened in Leopoldville. I actually believe that there was, before it reached Leopoldville, there was probably some transmission in selected hospitals and health centers through the drugs that were used to treat various infectious diseases. And I think what happened was that if you were in a village and you were the hunter who got infected with the virus... who got infected with the virus, the likelihood that you would move to a city was very low. But the likelihood that you would, in your own village, that you would be visited by a health team and that you would be diagnosed with some infection and you would be treated with intravenous drugs was very high. So I think at the very beginning, from the first patient, somewhere in that territory, it expanded to maybe a few hundred patients through injections. And once you had a few hundred persons infected, it was unavoidable that the, you know, the virus would spread as people were traveling. Now, Leopoldville, why it played such a central role? I mentioned the behavioral factors there, the health interventions. But maybe I didn't explain the geography. But if you look at the Congo River, it drains a huge territory and it goes even into southern Cameroon. And so it drains hundreds of rivers. And all these rivers eventually merge and become the Congo River. And then you arrive, you know, the human migrations, even during the pre-colonial era, people were traveling a lot on the Congo River. And when you arrive at Leopoldville and Brazzaville, that's the end of the journey, because you have waterfalls, small waterfalls there. So basically, a huge piece of land which eventually drain towards Leopoldville and Brazzaville. And for that reason, of course, the colonists, both the French and the Belgians, decided to build their capital cities there. So that also eventually, of course, attracted even a larger number of migrants. So I'm not saying that, you know, what I told you, what I presented today is the whole story. I mean, there were other parts of the story which unfolded in the areas inhabited by the chimpanzee. I think what I described in Leopoldville, the prostitution, it was certainly worse in Leopoldville, but it was found in the other colonial cities of Central Africa. So these factors existed as well.
Merci. Une question du Dr. Weinberg d'abord.
Yeah.
So thank you very much for your talk. Now, one of the things that we understand, and you said this, is that the Group M infections presumably originated from a single bushmeat event. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that's more or less what I understand from the literature and also from your talk. That a single bushmeat event that involved a human hunter or food handler who became infected gave rise to the Group M outbreak, which represents virtually all of what we consider today to be HIV. So my question is, why do you think that there were not other chimpanzee-to-human transmissions that might also have occurred in this period, that could also potentially have given rise to competing epidemics? Is that this one was so much more virulent and more able to replicate and be transmitted? Or are there other factors also?
Well, there are four groups. So there were four, at least apart from HIV-1 group M, there were three other viruses which cross-species. So there were at least four events. Why was HIV-1 group M so successful? You know, you're the virologist, but what I've been reading recently, it seems to be more likely to be, it seems to be very likely to be related to the resistance of HIV-1 group M to tethyrin. So tethyrin is a human protein which we all produce, which we all have. And one of its functions is to protect us against pathogens which come from other animal species. And for some reason, I'm not sure what the explanation is, but human tethyrin is very effective against HIV-1 group O, against HIV-1 group N, and against group P. And it seems to be ineffective against HIV-1 group M. So tethyrin, basically what it does is, once you have a first cell which is infected, it binds the virus as it tries to leave that cell and eventually infect other cells. And some people think that this may be the explanation or part of the explanation why HIV-1 group N was very successful. Now, maybe I didn't insist on that at the end, but there certainly must have been several other instances of cross-species transmission from chimpanzee to man, to man, which eventually led to dead-end infections. One such example of a dead-end infection is the famous case of the Norwegian sailor. This was a man who died in Norway in 1976 of a mysterious disease. His wife and their child died the same year. And eventually, maybe 20 years later, it was proven that they all died of HIV-group-O infection. So in this case, this sailor had traveled to Cameroon, where he probably got infected with HIV-1 group O, eventually infected his wife and their child, and that was the end of it. There was no further spread. So such dead ends must have existed within Africa, within Central Africa, for as long as HIV has been, or SIV-CPZ, sorry, has been present in chimpanzees, there must have been other cases, certainly.
Moi, j'ai une petite question, curiosité. Vous parlez dans votre livre, entre autres, que le VIH serait rentré chez les homosexuels via Haïti, où beaucoup d'homosexuels américains allaient voir des travailleurs du sexe. Est-ce que ça peut expliquer l'épidémie du SIDA quand même, toucher la communauté homosexuelle de façon très forte? On commence à parler un petit peu des réalités homosexuelles en Afrique, alors qu'on n'a jamais parlé probablement du rôle important. Avez-vous une idée autour de cette question?
So the question is about the role of homosexual transmission in the emergence of HIV or in the present epidemiological situation. Yeah, you are quite correct, actually. Over the last five or six years, there's been, first of all, a number of scientific studies which looked at the transmission of HIV among homosexuals in Sub-Saharan Africa. And there's also an emerging movement of liberation, if I can use that word, of gay men in Africa. But honestly, they're probably, in this process, they're probably at the stage which the American and Canadian gay community reached in the early 70s. So for a very long time, homosexuality in Africa was hidden. I mean, you didn't know it existed. And most of these, most of African gay men actually got married and had children, and they were, you know, having their homosexual life in a very hidden, you know, in the closet kind of stage. So I think, to answer your question, what role does it play today in the dynamics of HIV? I think it's certainly much more than when we thought 10 years ago. 10 years ago, you would have asked me that question, I would have said, you know, probably 0 or 0.1% of cases. I think it's likely to be substantially more than that, but the exact fraction of cases, I'm not quite sure. Now, historically, I'm not sure. I think certainly homosexuality must have been present there, you know, as long as human beings have been there. But because it was so highly repressed, it must not have been, you know, practiced on such a large scale. So I would think that historically, it probably played a small role. Nowadays, I think it's probably more important, but I wouldn't be able to guess what fraction of cases. But as you're probably aware, Dr. Thomas, the homosexuals in Africa, they are also having, there is very severe reaction from the, you know, the authorities and from the general population. So I think they're kind of trying to derepress homosexuality, but I think the next five of 10 years, those who do that in Africa, they're quite courageous. It's not going to be easy.
Thank you. Merci beaucoup. Alors avant, on laisse... Merci beaucoup, Dr. Peppant. Ce sera la dernière question. We are Saturday night in Montreal. There are many men and many free women, so hope you can have some fun. And Dr. Routhe, maybe you want to...
And if you get syphilis, you go at Clinique Lactuelle.
Merci beaucoup à tous les conférenciers. N'oubliez pas que pour en savoir plus...
Merci, Dr. Weinberg.
Le livre est en vente. Dr. Peppant, donc pour le gala, c'est 1 Place Ville-Marie. C'est juste en face. On peut soit... So either you cross the street or you can go underneath. And you have to go relatively early because food will be provided, and you better be there by 7:30. So please get dressed and cross the street for the party on 47th floor, 1 Place Ville-Marie. Thank you very much. And merci beaucoup, Dr. Peppant. Et merci à vous, Weinberg.